I'd like to call, I'd like to call the order of the Avalon City Council meeting, which will also include a meeting of the City Council acting as the Avalon Housing Authority this Tuesday, September 3rd. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Place your hands over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the choir of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we please stand and have many moments of silence. That dive boat tragedy this weekend was very devastating and as one public first responder said, he said, "This will go down in the history books as one of the worst diving disasters ever," and that's kind of a sad thing. So for the five crew that survived, and there's the others that some have been found and some are still missing and I presume dead, let us pray for them and their families. And Gabby, if we could please have the roll call.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
I'm going to read a, we don't have anybody here today, but I'd like to read a proclamation of the City of Avalon, of the City Council of the City of Avalon recognizing September 2019 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. This tragic disease is detected in more than 16,000 of our country's young people each and every year. Whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas founded over 25 years ago by Steven Feierstein, or Steen, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetic Family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc. and Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at the Children's Hospital, Los Angeles, Cedar Sinai Medical Center, the City of Hope, UCLA Mattel Children's Hospital, Jonathan Jock, Children's Cancer Center at Miller Children's and Women's Hospital, Long Beach, LA County USC Medical Center, Harbor UCLA Medical Center, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor toy distributions, family sailing programs, pet assisted therapy, KCC supercar experience, and hospital celebrations in honor of the children's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore, the City Council, the City of Avalon, would like to thank Kids Cancer Connection for all their support and honoring and encouraging those living with cancer and encouraging our citizens to raise awareness about the prevention and control of cancer. Day is the third day of September, Avalon City Council. Announcements?
I have no announcements this evening.
Okay, or written, okay. Department head reports.
Hi, I would like Gabby to talk about the written communication, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
The city received a letter today from Kathleen Goslin regarding item number seven on tonight's agenda and has requested the letter to be read into the record. To council members and city staff regarding September 3rd agenda item number seven, please do not take the city's advertising dollars away from Avalon citizens who need the tourist dollars and revenue to feed their families. Marketing budget cuts to state, cities, and DMOs have a history of devastating consequences to their regions, the state of California being not so long ago, San Diego even more recent. Please don't make the same mistake. We don't understand how a city whose sole income is derived from travel is considering diverting these funds. Business prudence follows that you never cut advertising budget when you are looking to maintain or increase your revenue. This is for all the hotel, restaurant, store workers, not just business owners. If the businesses lose, so do city revenues. Here are some constructive ways for the city to improve its revenue stream without hurting the people of Avalon. Number one, please approve the restaurant on the fuel dock. If it had been approved a few years ago, it would have already added $250,000 to city coffers. Number two, an appropriately run apartment complex at 206 East Whitley would have helped. Number three, the vacant office space at the mall is another resource for a city income. We as a city of workers can work together to find other sources without being short-sighted and cut off the revenue generating by our carefully executed advertising campaign. The Avalon Chamber uses this money, which is the driver of tourism, to help all of Avalon. Is everybody here, meaning staff and council members, willing to reach into our pockets further down the road when it, when we all find out how devastating cutting the marketing dollars to Catalina Island has become? Citizens, employees, and business owners in this committee always pay with their pockets when they make bad business decisions. We will all pay even more if the council and city staff are short-sighted. I think city staff and council members should be willing to agree to do their share of financial burdens on bad decisions. This is a bad decision if made. Do you individually want to be responsible for a loss of city revenue or worse yet, jobs for Avalon workers? Please respect the past city council business decisions to continue to fund advertising for the lifeblood of our town, tourism. Signed, Rock and Kathleen Goslin, Carl Lambert, The Avalon Hotel.
Thank you.
And then this, I'm sorry.
Another one.
The city also received three other written communications regarding number seven and one written communication in support of an additional cruise ship during the week.
Okay, I was just gonna pause. Okay, time for department head reports. Bob, jump on up.
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Four quick items. Mole Phase One update, contractors now at the start of the third week. They are fully mobilized. Work last week was completed by, on removing loose concrete on the ramps while waiting for the scaffolding underneath to be completed. That scaffolding now is at the tip of the mole and proceeding back about eight grade openings. And they are now underneath the structure today and they're chipping on the beams. And it's going, the work is going very well. Pebbley Beach Road lift station, work will start this week with jordall construction. The first item is to clean up and provide additional safety at the site and then work will commence from that point. Update on the parking on Sumner Beacon Catalina Metropole, so this next council meeting will be, staff will be providing you an update on the results of what happened with the parking at, on those four streets in relation to the Vons, all that work we did with the Vons improvements.
Did you get a lot of responses to that survey from summertime months?
We haven't got the responses that we expected, you know, so I think we have to reach out within this next week and, and reach out to the residents also and see how they're doing. I have talked to them, a lot of them personally, and I'll share those results when we get there next week. The master active transportation plan, we've got an update from SCAG. We reported before that we did receive a grant to start moving forward with that. The way that that one's gonna proceed is SCAG is actually gonna release an RFP that they're producing right now and they'll manage that RFP for us to have, you know, a master transportation plan in relation to active transportation modes. That RFP should be complete by mid-September, the draft of it. The procurement for the work with a consultant would be the fall/winter of 2019, 2020, and the anticipated project kickoff would be in spring of 2020. Okay, so that's at least looking forward to that master plan. Any questions?
The parking on, just for, the parking on Descanso, there was a discussion that we would take a look at this, what, in the second week in September? You said about a month to look at that? Remember Denise?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that second meeting in September?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And how about the rails or whatever on Sumner and Catalina?
So, that is a story behind it too, of course. So, the way that the ramps laid out, we weren't anticipating needing rails and as we finished up with the grades there, we do need to put rails. And one of the things that we wanted to try to do was put something aesthetically, more aesthetically pleasing than just standard rail. But those became prohibitive in costs, so what I'm trying to get is prices right now where we would install our own cable rail, which we've used around the rest of the community. So, that's, that's the way we'd like to proceed at this point and get that done for you.
Okay.
Okay?
Be nice to get those cones out of there, yeah. I understand, okay.
Captain John Hawking, Sheriff's Station. I just wanted to talk about seat belts for a couple minutes or 30 seconds here. If you haven't heard, we had a visitor to the island. She was 43 years old, from Arizona, came out with her boyfriend slash fiance relationship and was not wearing a seatbelt. They both had been drinking, that played a little part. He wasn't over .08. They made a quick turn in front of Bird Park. She fell out of the golf cart, hit her head. She was on life support for three days and then passed away. If she would've had her seatbelt on, she would've lived. I know seat belts over here are kind of a, it's difficult to enforce because some golf carts don't come with seat belts. Some golf carts are so old, you couldn't even put seat belts on them. However, if your golf cart has seat belts, you need to wear your seatbelt. And especially something like this, people were drinking, they're visiting the island, having a great time. Last few days, we've been stopping people and giving them warnings about seat belts. I've seen on the social media websites, there's seat belts that you can buy for, and I don't know the exact cost, $40. There was somebody that posted on the social media site, the Catalina sites, that they would install them for like another $40, $80. I really think this lady would pay the $80 to, and her family. So, I just want to talk about that. We are gonna be issuing citations, so if you have them, wear them, help us out, it could save your life.
Were they in a rental golf cart?
Yes, they were in a rental golf cart.
In which they are always telling them and stopping them about wearing their seatbelts, wearing their seatbelts, you know, so they, they're due diligence, but some people just...
They really are.
Yeah.
I got, we're doing the investigation on it, obviously with our homicide detectives, and their contract that they sign has it on there. We're making up flyers now that they're willing to put up at the rental locations, that Sheriff's Department flyers, that says, "If you don't wear your seatbelt, you could be issued a citation." So, just try to help us to keep you safe, and that's what, that's what we ask.
I see one question. So, you said if you have them, you need to wear them, but if you don't have them, then do you have...
If you don't have them, you should get them and have them installed and wear them. You're required by the California Vehicle Code to wear them.
Yes.
So, you're supposed to wear them. But when we see a golf cart driving down the street, four people in the golf cart, two babies on their laps in the back, not, I'll give you one perfect example. There was a rental golf cart the other day, I saw, they did not have their belts on. I stopped them. The child was in a car seat with the belt not strapped around the car seat. It took me two seconds. I pulled the belt out, wrapped it around, plugged it, plugged it in, and at least that's something to hold it in. Yes, there's supposed to be three-point harnesses and there's all these classes that you're supposed to go to to learn about car, baby seat safety, but at least that will hold that baby in if the driver steps on the brake real fast.
Right, okay.
So, we're, we're trying our best to keep people safe.
We appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Uh-huh.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff. Just briefly, very busy Labor Day weekend, several significant calls, including a boat fire in front of the harbor on Thursday on the kickoff of the weekend. There was also a full arrest on the West End that I'm told had some positive outcome. I'd also like to remind everyone that next Wednesday, September 11th, we'll be doing our annual memorial stair climb at the Crescent Street Stairs. The public is welcome to attend. We climb the equivalent together of 110 stories, which is the height of the World Trade Centers. We don't expect anyone to climb 110 stories, but everyone is welcome to join us and participate with that. Crescent Street Stairs, September 11th, 8:30 in the morning. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Can you give us an update? Where are you specifically, Fire and sheriffs, where are you guys at with communications with wet travel regarding the Groove Island?
I'll be very candid. We are having a tremendous amount of difficulty in working with wet travel. They've brought on some different people, specifically a gentleman named Bobby Wells that was at the town hall meeting. He's been terrific to work with. We've received more communication through him since he's come on board than we had previously. But since we've been bumping up against, we're less than three weeks away, we're still have, don't have a contract signed, we haven't worked out the billing process for emergency services, and there's a tremendous amount of unanswered questions. I'll let Captain Hawking bump in here as well.
Yes, ma'am, it's the same as what Mike just said. We have our, brought in our Emergency Operations Bureau. They're the deputies that basically, basically put on special events. And it's got so bad that the Catalina Island Company is now the middleman between going through the first responders and wet travel, and Catalina Island Company has been outstanding. We have meetings with them, they're so responsive to us, but the bottom line is, the Emergency Operations Bureau for the Sheriff's Department gave them a number that they feel is reasonable to provide security to the event. The wet travel came back and said they cannot afford that many deputies, so we're going to them now and asking them, "If you can't afford that many deputies, what can you afford?" And I will do everything possible to make that work. Zero. We haven't heard anything back, and all we're dealing with now is the Catalina Island Company, who like I said, is outstanding. They're very responsive to us, but they aren't paying the bill. It's this company. And that's where we're at.
There is rumor on the street that it is canceled, so if anybody from the Island Company can get...
Really? That it is canceled?
Yeah, I mean, I've heard that from a couple of people today, but I don't know. We have Rob in the audience, maybe he can shed a little light on it. I mean, it's, I didn't mean to put you on the, but, but if there's a rumor, if there's a rumor and it can be dispelled...
Thank you for your time, Bert. I haven't heard of anything even remotely true to what you referred to, Mayor.
Okay, perfect.
We are in negotiations with wet travel. We know it's a cumbersome and laborious process. The expectations are pretty high from our community safety team, but there are, there's legitimacy to, to that request and those asks. I just think there's a fundamental difference in the expectation, the delta of the cost of that. It's pretty significant. And, and we would, we would argue that this event, like others, would not impose a level of, uh, uh, community protection support to the degree in which the value of that support is being asked. So, that's where we're at right now. We're in a little bit of a exchange with Bobby and the rest of the team, but we do believe this is gonna go forward. Tickets have been sold, and it would pretty, be a pretty big job to undo all of this after all this time. So, yeah, we're in the middle, we're in a middle position right now, but we'll, we'll work it out and we'll get to some common ground.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one more thing on the subject is, we're asking them, if they think it was too much, let us know what's reasonable in their mind to see if we can make that work. And if they're watching this or hear about this, please contact me. I just need to know so I can get the personnel. I can't do it with one or two deputies that the city's paying for to be in the city and they're gonna be out at that event the whole time.
I understand.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Chief, did you have something else to add?
No, I did not, unless you have any other questions for me.
Okay, I think we're good.
No, I just, I just hope that we have more than just the one or two deputies on that we normally would.
Absolutely.
And then, because I, I know that most of the event is happening on private property, so I'm, I'm sure that, that they're mitigating their liability there. I just want to make sure that the city and when they leave private property and are walking through town and whatnot, that the city's covered.
Absolutely, and, and even though it's happening on private property, if there's an emergency or call for service, whether that's Fire, medical, or law enforcement, we want to have the appropriate resources to respond and deal with whatever call that is.
Yes.
All right, and thank you.
Thank you.
We have a finance department, and we have a community services department, and we have a planning department.
But only if they had something to report. That was the request from council.
So, I'll be brief. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. On your dais, I put our Fall Activity Guide hot off the press for the community. There's some on the back table, and then we'll have it posted tomorrow on our website. A couple highlights, some new programs that we've got coming up. Our tumbling and dance program is gonna be adding a cheer, a competitive cheer program. They're gonna try it for five years and up. There is a general meeting for it, September, the Saturday, the 7th, at 4 o'clock at Tremont Hall. Instructors will be here talking a little bit about the commitment, time commitment, financial commitment, and a little bit about the program. Also in there, we've got a new program. It's a movement and play program. We're gonna try a pickleball program for both youth and adults. We're gonna try beach bingo. Typically, we close beach bingo at the end of summer. We're gonna try some Saturday beach bingo through the month of September on Middle Beach at 5 o'clock from 5 to 6, so an hour earlier, see how that goes. We're taking registrations for booths for Fall Festival and youth soccer right now. And then our teen center, we've shut it down for a couple weeks in the summer. We're cleaning it up. We just re-carpeted the stage. We've got some new couches coming in. We've got some new games coming in. We're gonna kick it off on the 13th, Friday the 13th, a barbecue for the kids and the parents for 6 to 8, and then we're gonna kick the, the parents out at 8 o'clock and kinda kick up the fun with the kids, and that'll be the kickoff of the teen center for the school year. And then lastly, outrigger, just an outrigger update. We had a great, you might've seen some of the information that's been out, but we had a great nine-man season. The beginning of the month, we had two teams, two co-ed teams, take a first and second at Dana Point. The following weekend, the women took a third place in Ocean Side, which was their first time that they've placed. And we had a crew that went to Hawaii this past weekend. They took a fourth out of 17 in that division, missed third place by 17 seconds, 18 seconds. And then this weekend is kind of the finale of the season with the Catalina Crossing Women racing from Newport to Catalina on Saturday, and then the men racing back on, on Sunday morning. So, with that, any questions?
I understand there's a, a little push to keep water aerobics going a little longer.
There is a little push. I've been in many situations where I've seen the same push, and when the weather's nice like this, come November and December, when the pool gets cooler. So, we're, the plan is to take it through mid-October, and that's what we've done in the past. We've got a little potluck celebration, and we've done that the last couple of years. We'll see how it goes. We'll start to, we've already seen the numbers go from 2025 to, you know, 10 or 12, which is great.
Right.
But they'll, they'll start to dwindle from there, so we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Amanda Cook, Planning Department. I just have one really quick update. Zangray didn't quite pass their elevator inspection this past week, so we're hoping they're gonna be able to regroup and we'll be able to issue them their temporary certificate of occupancy as soon as they get that passed. They are, we are gonna be holding some funds for them for some future drainage improvements that they're gonna make once the city brings in some hot mix, I think in October. And that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. City manager report?
I have nothing this evening, ma'am.
Okay, and I'm assuming finance that we're gonna be hearing from you later. Okay, and city attorney, no?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, council members.
Start out, um, I just have, wanted a little direction and also put it out, the special events or committee that we put together that myself and Councilmember Cassidy are on. We can't start that forum, correct? We, a community member or a business owner needs to...
Correct, you're an ad, you were appointed to be on the ad hoc committee, so it has to be generated from the public. We cannot arrange it.
Okay. So, we're on the committee, so I'd just like to put it out to the community, any business owners or community members that would like to start that ball rolling and create a time and a place to put together that meeting that myself and Councilmember Cassidy would be happy to attend and would really like to get that moving.
Perfect.
Secondly, I would like to see if the council would be in favor of potentially having the city attorney looking into what it might be to permit, um, doing some dredging in the harbor and building jetties and kinda going back. I know we've talked a lot about what we might do with the express and the beach situation. I think it's getting very dangerous down there with the, the steepness of that. And for, I've talked to a lot of people about the history as long as I've been here as well, and there always was sand brought in from Ben Weston, there always was dredging when before we needed permitting, but talking to the city attorney, it is possible, and I'd like just to maybe see if we could see what that might look like to maybe do that during the winter and potentially get that sand back up.
And do we, wanna bring that in as a point, number one, with an update?
I think Bob Greenlaw could shed a little bit of light on that, and that's all tied into our sedimentation study that we had, and, yeah.
So, we are gonna be repairing the seawall this fall, okay, so, and then we also put an application in with the Department of Boating and Waterways. They had, we put in two applications, and one of those for, was for dredging and beach re-nourishment of the sand so that we'd actually dredge the harbor and bring that sand, because our studies showed that it was right out there under the pier, so we dredge that and bring it back. We haven't heard the results of that funding application yet, but that would help us because we think it's gonna be in the range of $300-plus thousand to be able to bring a dredge over here and dredge and, and complete that work. Then we'll have to also look at what the structural improvements are to make sure that we don't lose that sand again, so we'll be working on that too, okay?
All right, thank you.
Okay.
And those two things were, were tying up the express in a different way so they could run with the motors, and then the other thing was putting that, what do you call that little, like, yeah, that groin back out to, yeah.
I can add one more thing to that. We are working on some different alternatives for the express to tie up that I had reported before, that there were some low-cost alternatives to be able to tie them up, and we're working on the engineering on that right now and should be able to report back that, what our plan is here in the very near future.
Do you think you need more information than that, or what?
No.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. All righty.
You're cool, thank you.
You are cool, okay.
I have a couple, even though I, I, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. I'm attending the Gateway City's Council of Government meeting tomorrow night. I wanna do a nice thank you to all of the community volunteers who came out for a school work day last Wednesday, or the week before Wednesday, before school started. We have a couple, Janet is in the audience, who helped work on the school group. There's a group that will put together some more projects at the school as the school year goes forward, so if you're interested, feel free to reach out to myself or, there's many of us in the community who are connected to that, so thank you again. We had a harbor advisory meeting today, which was very productive and, and a great meeting. We talked a lot about maintenance in the harbor and planning. We have quite a few questions we'll, we'll send over to the harbor department just to help educate members of our community on what, how maintenance occurs now and, and planning and all of that, as well as looking at the possibility of a customer satisfaction survey for the, specifically for the boating community and what that survey might look like, and we'll talk about that more in future meetings. And then we would've been scheduled to have our community advisory committee meeting today with the Sheriff's Department, and that is currently gonna take a month or two hiatus. And also, if any members of the community were interested in participating in that advisory committee, I guess Carl Johnson would be a great person to reach out to, let, let us know you're interested, and we'll add you to a group. And that's all I have.
And I will be attending the Southern California, Southern California Association of Government meeting tomorrow with Assistant City Manager Michael Palmer. with Assistant City Manager Michael Palmer. That's all I have. Oral communication, this is an opportunity for members of the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken. Oh, yes. There you are.
I wouldn't miss it for the world.
And I know.
Hello, everybody. Paul Burchell, Avalon Library. Thank you. Our September schedule is out. Come to your library. We've got a lot of stuff going on this month. Let's see if I can do them all in three minutes. Starting this next Saturday, we're going to begin our session of Smarty Pants Storytime. That's a school readiness storytime. I know I've talked about it before here. If you go to Storytime, they've been, it's been proven in academic journals and studies. Your kids will do better in school when school starts. They'll do, they'll get better jobs when they get out of school. They'll go to college. They'll become millionaires when they're, you know, 30. So start this out by coming to Storytime. Now, seriously, they've done studies on this. I'm not making it up. Coming up, we also are, we've invited back the county library's science librarian team. They're going to be making their first visit in several months, on the 14th. They're going to be bringing little Ozobots that you can learn coding with. There's going to be one session at 2:30 in the afternoon, on Saturday at 2:30, for children specifically, and then at 4:30, for children and adults. On the 19th, I have a storyteller who's going to, Barbara Wong, who's going to do multicultural stories from around the world. That's going to be a lot of fun. On the 26th, I've got a magic show with Joe Self, who's a former muppeteer, apparently. So we'll see how that works. I think that's going to be a lot of fun. I want to remind everybody about our ongoing ukulele classes, courtesy of our friends at the library. That's continuing every Wednesday in People's Park at 4 o'clock. Oh, that's awesome. I mean, people are still picking up ukuleles and strumming them about. I do a chess club every other Tuesday, so the next chess club is going to be next Tuesday at 3:30, September 10th and the 24th. History talk with Chuck Liddell, that's going to be on the 17th, Tuesday, the 17th. I've got an art project for Hispanic Heritage Month. On Wednesday, September 18th, we're going to be making yarn art. They just sent me the kit. It looks really beautiful. And a couple of other quick things while I'm here. Magic, parent-child workshop starting in a couple weeks. That's when we have toys, and it's a chance for parents and caregivers to bond with their children, and we're going to try, we have a resource specialist, a different one every week, who offers handy advice on early literacy, or health, or dental care, depending on who I can get, frankly. And then looking into the farther future, in October, I've just booked somebody who does Japanese floral arrangements. I'm sorry, I'm looking forward to that one. That's going to be very cool. And also for teens, make your own comic books. That's coming up in October. I've got a whole bunch of comic book templates, and I think it's really fun. Anyway, thank you very much for your time. Come to your library. We've got all sorts of wonderful stuff for you.
Any others from the community like to speak on items not on the agenda? Any, no, does anybody else want to speak on items that are not on the agenda? Ralph, are you coming to speak on something that's not on the agenda, or something that is?
Ralph Morrow, 222 Metropole. I'm here supporting Richard Hernandez and Joe for coming back on the council. I got a bunch of phone calls from people, and they said, the city council, last time that you got up here, they treated you like you owed them money. And I said, no, no, it's typical. And my feelings never get hurt, because I've been, I've been a mayor like eight years with her, with our city manager's father. He was on 12 years, so we went 20 years mayor, two of us. We went through a lot of different city managers who we hired from the outside, and that worked really well, too. I love this one. This one's okay. Anyway, I want to, I want to make sure that, I want to let somebody, let a few people know. Before I came here, I was 35. I worked at McDonnell Douglas for NASA. I was a, I was an engineer. We designed a piece of equipment that flew with the S5. That's the big rocket that takes people up in, up in the, up to the moon. And we took care of a couple of our kids and got them in the Naval Academy, because I worked with the astronauts. And so I did all that before I got here. I never told anybody much of what I've done, but I've done a lot. So anyway, at least they'll say, who are you? So, and I like that, but I just wanted everybody to know that 50 years ago, we just, we just celebrated 50 years of going to the moon, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, so I didn't even celebrate.
What's that?
I'm done.
Oh, he didn't celebrate. I'm sorry, didn't even, okay. Thank you.
Hi, council. I just wanted to state that on September 20, 21st and 22nd is our 61st Annual Festival of Arts on Front Street, and thank you to the city for allowing us how, God, these ones, I'm sorry. We have over 56 different vendors coming in, displaying different art. We have art demonstrations on Front Street, base painters, music, so I just wanted to say we're on our 61st year for the festival.
Well, happy anniversary, yes. Is that it for oral? Okay, consent calendar.
We have five items this evening on the consent calendar. The first one is minutes from the August 20th, 2019 regular meeting of the city council. Second one is a dispersment from August 9th through August 23rd, totaling $1,755,141.69. Number three is to adopt a resolution supporting the City of Avalon's submission of an application for the California Coastal Commission Local Coastal Plan Planning Grant Program, which is round six. The fourth one is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Townsend Public Affairs for grant management and for a one-year term at the cost of $4,000 per month for a total annual cost of $48,000. They are in the audience if you have a question for them. Number five is to approve a contract with Ola Unu for a not-to-exceed amount of $50,000 to assist the City of Avalon with compliance with the year six requirements of the small municipal separate storm sewer system, and you always hear it referred to as the MS4 permit, and to make the findings that, sorry, there's a typo there. It should say that Ola Unu has satisfied the sole source requirements as specified in the AMC, which is the municipal code.
I would like to abstain from item number one, since I was absent, and I do have a couple of questions on item five, if we could please pull that.
Is there any other items to be pulled?
I'm staff on 1-4.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, call for further questions? Call for the vote.
And just, if you could just please remind me, is there an, this is going to be an annual? Hi, this is going to be, this is an annual thing that we're going to have to continue to do, correct?
Correct.
At least in the short term, that's correct.
Until we satisfy all of the requir, until we satisfy all of the requirements of the cease and desist? Isn't that where this is?
No, this is separate. This is, this is the, this is the state's regulation on your stormwater, and applies to all cities, and all cities have to have a stormwater plan, and this is helping you comply with the state requirements on stormwater.
Some of it does fulfill the requirements from the cease and desist order. So there's two options that the city could kind of move forward. We could continue to contract that out, or we could look at how to build capacity to take some of those tasks potentially and internalize them.
So that would be my next question, is now that we have your expertise on board, is it possible to mentor over this next year and then not consult this out in further years?
We have slowly, I'll just say before Michael got on board, we have slowly been, all the tasks that, I just went blank on his name, the gentleman that we work with, to shrink his tasks and have in some of it come on board with city staff fulfilling it. So like, we started out with a larger amount on the contract, and we're down to the $50,000. Over the last few, two years, anyway, it's gone from, I believe, $70-something thousand to this $50,000. Does that?
Okay.
As long as, I just want to see us continue to bring that in-house.
Yes, ma'am.
If we could.
Yeah.
That was it. I just want to know if it was possible to mentor a little bit more and bring more and more in-houses.
Yeah, we can, we can work with Daniel at Olanu and just look at ways that we could better internalize that, or if there's things that we can take a look at from the city perspective and change. That's definitely something that, I think he would like that, too, because, number one, it promotes better accountability within the city to have better control over that. There might be a couple of things that we'll still need to contract out. While I am familiar with the MS4 program, he's definitely much more of the expert, and this is his world, so there are definitely, there's always going to be a need for an expert, but we can continue to diminish what role they play.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion. We approve item number five on a consent calendar.
Moved in second. No further comment. Call for the vote.
All ayes. And could we do a verbal count? We had a little bit of difficulty with the count on items 1 through 4.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All ayes.
Then she abstained on one.
Yes, stayed on it.
Item number six.
Item number six is filling the vacant seat on the city council. Just a little refresher, as of July 16th, when council member Hernandez submitted his resignation. The council has a couple of options, and that is to either appoint that seat or to call for a special election.
And just a little bit more background on the timing of the election issue. California law requires that there be, once the seat is vacant, the earliest you can have an election is three and a half months, and the election has to be on a date that there is already an election. This is a new law that was passed a couple of years ago to consolidate elections, so there's four dates that you can have an election. And because of the date that this seat became vacant, there was not enough time to have an election in November, so the next possible date that you can have an election, if you decide to have an election, is in March.
March 3rd.
March 3rd, okay.
So your option is to fill it by, we can have from now, or to have that seat be filled at the election in March.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. I forgot to say that.
Okay, council, comments? Or a motion, or a?
I think the circumstances when we point Steve are different now. Steve was like 17 votes away from winning the seat, and the next closest person on the list is like 200 votes back. And I'm not sure that we necessarily need what the general population is wanting. So I'm thinking we might want to do a special election.
Shall I ask if y'all want to comment?
Hi, Debbie Avalona. I'm walking, 327 Metropole. I'm just going to ask a simplistic question. At the beginning, you had four options. You could leave it empty, appoint somebody, have an election, or leave it blank, right? Isn't that the four original? Scott, am I wrong about filling a seat?
Well, if you call us, you can't leave it empty. You have to make a decision whether you're going to appoint or call a special election. If you don't do either of those two, and you don't take an action, which is what they're being asked to do, then you subject yourself to a loss.
It was something like that, three or four in the neighborhood, okay. So last time, to fill the other seat, it was a very awkward and difficult meeting for everybody, right? The election was expensive. There was much discussion, you know, all that. It's too late to find out, you know, what would happen had we had an election, because we've already, you already appointed one. What is it, about six weeks later, right? And through much grief, it was a tough meeting, you know? I mean, I was at home watching you, but it was tough, you know, because it's really hard for me. I'm guilty of it. I can mix up principle and personality all the time, because you don't, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, but blah, blah, and blah, blah. So six weeks ago, it appeared that you went with Steve, and he had the last, highest number of votes. So it seems just like that's probably what you would do, just from sitting in the audience. It's like, okay, off the top, because it was a tough decision. So if you, if we, if you decide to change from that mode of thinking that you spent some sweat getting to, I just, I don't understand why. I would go to the next on the list and do it that way. It's what, all the way till March? It's not, you know, the end, right? There was a lot of discussion about who had experience, at what, for what, la, la, la. I've been watching you. I mean, definitely in my pajamas, but, you know, I'm up with this, you know? And I just, it's, there's so much chatter, you know? We all chatter about everything, right? But I was just wondering, what would prompt switching, the way you did it last time, what, about six weeks ago, to doing something else? That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. It's nice to see you out and about.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody wants to respond to that, council.
I think, I'm happy to hear what anyone else in the audience wants to say first.
Walking to the podium, as you would say, right?
I'm kind of curious to know if the next special elec, if you elect for a special election, does it cost money, because it's happening in March when there's already an election? Like, how does that work? Because it was going to cost 50 grand last time. Now, what's it going to cost?
No, so we need to clarify here. We have no way to evaluate how much a special election was going to cost us. The county still, to this day, cannot give it. I have budgeted, in our budget, $50,000 for our next election, because we didn't know how much it was going to cost, and we just increased it every election we've had when we were working with our election consultants. So Carl, to say, to add measures or, it's all, it's our, just, our general, it would be like our general municipal election, and I have no cost estimate, other than what I put in my budget.
So I think, if, to answer the question, if there had been a special election, and the only item on that election was the filling of a council seat, that would have cost money, because there wouldn't be another election. And so, but the county couldn't tell us what that was. We budgeted $50,000 for that. At this time, if you call, if they call a special election, it's the same date as the March election.
So it's no additional cost.
I do not anticipate any additional cost, because you're going to have, you already have three seats up for that election, so you'd just be adding, you'd be adding a fourth.
All right, that answers my question.
Oh, thank you.
Obviously, I wasn't up here, and the other three made the decision, but I, just to clarify the process that was taken, it's pretty clear that the council had an option of what we've talked about, and their option on the first night was to let anybody put in an application, or a resume, or a statement, which that process happened. Multiple people did put in that application, and then another meeting took place. And as I recall, somebody else was nominated for that position before I was, and a vote took place. It happened to me that it was two to two. to me that it was two to two, which didn't pass, and then subsequently, I was nominated after that, and a vote took place, and was three to one, and I got the seat. So, to say that it was strictly because I had the second highest amount of votes and I was behind, that was not the process that actually took place.
Good evening. Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. As I'm thinking about this, my concern, if you choose to have a special election, is that we would only have four council people here voting for the next six months, seven months, and I really feel we need five. Whether you choose to appoint, or take the next candidate, which would be Joe, to wait and only have four of you, when somebody has to abstain, I don't think you're representing the city fully. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Richard Anders, 360, the council. If I remember correctly, when I was up there, that there was a motion made by Mr. Olson, I think, and I think it was amended at one point, where Cindy said the next highest vote getter would be the next one we vote for, if I remember correct. Well, we had amended his motion to be, and that was, was said, the next highest vote getter. You guys kind of laid the foundation already. I don't understand why we're waving from it. You have a guy here with experience, he just got off the council four years ago. I don't know what the, all the hullabaloo's about. You have a pretty good guy right here, he wants to do it, he's shown his passion for the city, and here we're lollygagging about it. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me. That's just my feeling, that's just my opinion. But that's what was said at that meeting. We're going to take the next highest vote getter. Thank you.
This seat, Richard. Hey, Richard. You can sit right here. We miss, I miss you.
Michael Ponce, actually, the motion was made that, you didn't use names, you just, the motion was made that you would appoint the third vote, the third, that third top vote getter, that, that was it. It was, there was no, we're going to go to the next person in line, is, the motion was, we're going to go with the third top vote getter. No names were used, just that.
The motion was amended. Steve's name was added to it.
But what I wanted to say is, I, I don't want this to become a political thing, and a logical thing would be appoint somebody to the seat who isn't going to run in the next election. Get somebody up there who's just going to focus on getting the job done and not getting elected to the office.
A question would be, how would that go? Because we'd have to somehow put the word out, and then those people who said they would want to do it, but not, then we'd have to make a selection from those folks.
Well, you could, you could, in the week and a half you have left, you could say, okay, if there are any people that would, would be willing to be considered for the seat, who would promise not to run. That promise, though, frankly, you, you can't, you know, the election code says that they can promise that, but we can't hold them to that legally speaking, in terms of if they decide to pull papers and go in. So, you would, you could consider that against that person, if they say that, and they, and they decided to pull papers. But you can't legally disenfranchise someone from putting their papers in, even though they promised that they won't.
Excuse me. I asked a question when I stood up. I haven't heard it answered. Steve, I appreciate you answering it, but we were both in the audience, okay? I just asked what's different about this seat than six weeks ago. I, I appreciate how hard the meeting was. We have it on tape, right? And you started out by, I think, nominating Carl. Didn't, is that originally what, how it started out?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just pulling my memory. I didn't need to review the tape, you know? So I was looking at it. It was an awkward decision. And Ole, you made a comment that maybe the general public actually wanted that election. I think that's probably true, but very often, what is good for the greatest number is what we, the voters, accept. I accepted your decision, okay? It seemed to me that that's what you wanted to do, and it made sense. Steve, you had the next number of votes. But in six weeks, what changed from that? And that's what I just asked you. Now, Steve, I appreciate you answering me, but you weren't sitting up here yet, okay? And I'm not, this ain't personal. I'm just asking what changed in six weeks. And then you answered Carl right away, but you haven't answered me, so I'd like you to. Thank you.
And who would like to answer that?
I can only speak for myself in that I started, every single conversation was saying that I wanted the community to be involved, whatever that decision was going to be. And shame on you, to those people in the community who have twisted my words and said that I have said things differently, shame on you. I said all along from the beginning that I wanted the, the community to be involved in this decision, whether that was if we wanted to appoint someone, that I felt anybody who sat in a seat on this dais needed to go through the public scrutiny that those of us that actually got elected went through. That I didn't feel it was appropriate, in as, in the difficultness of the decision as it was, to have to choose what a thousand voters in town should have the right to choose for. So, given the fact that I wanted to do a special election, and it was 30 to approximately $50,000, I could not justify in my heart spending 30 to $50,000 on a special election when I knew that we were going to have an election in March, or that the number of votes between the two of them, when it all weighed out, was so insignificant that we spent the first week after the election trying to figure out who our next council member was going to be. So, in not wanting to spend that money, I agreed at the first meeting to say, along with my fellow council members, that we did not want to spend the money for the special election. But I again said, I wanted the community to be involved in the decision, no matter what that decision was. So, not from the beginning, it wasn't until we made the vote that I had agreed, yes, take the next person in line. Now, after that meeting, I can't even begin to list the number of people who expressed their sheer disappointment in my decision that we did not put it out to the voters for an election. This seat is not an easy seat. I don't care how many people look from the audience or watch from TV to think that these decisions are easy, because they are not. And Richard, you put us in this position again, and you had your reasons, and I respect your reasons for whatever they were, but, but this decision is even harder, because we should be sitting with you up here. And that's what I had hoped that we would have done, is sat with you. So now that we're in this decision again, my vote is to go out for a special election, because that's what a number of people wanted from the beginning, and those people who even walked out of this room when we said we weren't going to do a special election, who were upset that we didn't do it. So this time, the first time, we made an appointment. The second time, I feel that we should put it out to the community and let you decide, and put it out to a special election.
Richard, we...
Just want to be, Ole's, was trying to clear up the vote, the vote differences between him and, and Joe, Stephen Joe. It doesn't matter, it's like a baseball game. When you lose something, you lose. You lose by one run, you lose by 10 runs. Doesn't matter. You lost, okay? There shouldn't be anything different now, and I understand what you're saying, but there was a lot of people, but you were the first ones to pull the trigger when you voted, to point somebody. And I understand you're talking about everybody else wanting to get involved in it, but they voted us in there, and that's our job to make a decision up here. That's what we voted you in for. That's all I got to say.
And Cindy? I watched you agonize over that decision. I watched you...
Wait, I'm sorry, babe, put that mic closer to your face, Mel.
I watched you. You said, for, thank you God for my memory, okay? You said, "I would prefer to have an election, but I can't justify spending that kind of money." And I really am interested, you said all that, okay? And listen, like I just said a moment ago, and I hope that shame on you wasn't for me.
No.
Because I feel like getting personal now. But, no, it's all right. And listen, what do they call those, something quarterbacks, the day after the game, okay? It's like, I, there are those of us who are, like, participating, we, we call our council people, we take them to coffee after 30 years, and, you know, like, whatever, and we sit down and talk about it. I mean, that's what Avalon is, that's why I love this city, all right? We're a little city council, a little this, you know? I'm not saying that, that wasn't the option. It was one of the most awkward meetings. I was, it's this and the street vendors. I don't worry, I wouldn't, I can't, I can't. I can't. You know what I mean? I need Valium for that, no. And it was awkward, it was tough. But you came to the solution. You didn't hear from me, and I'm loud about everything, right? You didn't hear from me, I accept it, all right? I'm trying to keep the personalities out of it, but the, the thing that you wound up making the decision was from the last election list. I mean, Richard made a point. You lose by 10, you lose by a million, you lost, right? If I came in second or I came in 400th, I didn't finish the marathon first, you know? So it doesn't, that's a moot, doesn't matter. There was much discussion that night about who had experience, recent experience, la 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 la. Steve, you got up and talked a little bit, you know? I had forgotten you were the, the two things at the same time, right? Like, right? You had a fire, and a something, and the manager, and whatever. You know, we, everybody's had a little history here, we all have. I don't think it has to really be this, you know, this hard. I also agree with Leslie. I like five, because two and two is, two is easy to get stuck on. It just is, you know? So, okay, I just want to clarify. I watched you agonize, I watched you agonize, I watched all y'all agonize over the decision, you know? And I love this city. What's good for the city is good for me. Do I agree with it all the time? No. Paled it. Uh-oh. All right, I'm taking that.
Ladies, gentlemen, this is a, a difficult thing for you, but if you just analyze it, the people that are running in this forum here, in the short time that they're going to be on, are not going to drag the city down into the sewer. They're going to do their very best, along with you. You can stop anything ridiculous that they propose, because you can all have a vote. Any one of us would probably be okay. But to ask somebody to ridiculously promote that they won't run in a next election is ludicrous. If, if it were I, I would run just to make your hair fall out. That's what I would do. Because I think that's ridiculous to propose that. But if you, if you want to spend $50,000, buy me a car. Don't waste it on an election that's going to be so short, and you're not going to, you're not going to have a dragon sitting up there. You're going to have somebody who's more than likely going to do their very best. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
So just a confirmation, if we did do, if we did put it out for special election, then it would automatically roll to the March 3rd, and it would not cost the city any additional money.
Right.
So, given the fact that we've already appointed 20% of our council, I would like the other 20% of our council to go out to the voters, and I would make a motion to go to special election.
That motion would be to pass a resolution calling for the special election to fill the vacancy.
That.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Further comment? Call for the vote.
Three ayes. Council member Haves, council member Cassidy, council member Olson, one no, Mayor Marshall.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's that, right?
Yes.
On to item number seven. Boy, we're having fun today. Okay.
Okay. Item number seven is a discussion regarding the use and allocation of transient occupancy tax. Just a little bit of history, we did start discussing TOT and distribution of it, and that was back in the fall, when we were adopting our fiscal year 1819 budget. This item was brought back again in January 15th to the city council, and that was to increase the TOT from 12% to 14%, and then during our two revenue generating study sessions on July 18th and August 22nd. A little bit of history, is in 1956, the city did start giving money to the chamber, and that was adopted by, via ordinance, and that was monies coming, no more than 5% coming from the general fund, and that was to promote the island. 1983, they clarified that ordinance, they clinged it up a little bit. 1994, it was determined that 22% of the TOT, and at that time, the rate was only 9%. At 2004, it went to the voters, it was increased from 9% to 12% TOT, and they also repealed the original ordinance from 1956, and so the chamber no longer received any monies from the business license fees. We have, there is one correction on the staff report I'd like to point out, and that was the deadline of a ballot measure being put on the next ballot, the election, and that's, it said October 15th, and it's really October 24th. I just want to clarify, clean that up. Matt Baker has, has prepared a slight PowerPoint presentation for you, just on some TOT facts, and I think that, and once again, Gabby said she had received three written communications on this item. Oh, I have one last thing. I just want to make sure that council, that you're, you need to provide some direction to staff. If you're going to do any of these options or you're not, it's to put it on a ballot, we would have to prepare the proper things to bring back to you for a formalization of it. You're not saying you're for or against it, it is if you want to proceed forward.
Yeah, there's some cost involved in preparing the ballot. We'd bring back the actual initiative for the council, for an actual vote, to actually place it on the ballot, and we'd probably do that the first meeting in October.
Okay.
Then, again, I've prepared a brief presentation, just to provide some background and context. Some of it's stuff we've discussed at the prior revenue study sessions, but I think it's important just to have a little background as well. So again, this is the fund balance schedule from the '20 budget, and I'm just drawing attention to our general fund. We used fund balance reserves to balance the fiscal year '20 budget, and fiscal year '20 drew approximately 500,000. We also lost approximately 500,000 in administrative allowance revenues for managing our successor agency. Again, so fiscal year '20 was the first year where we lost 500,000 of that revenue source, and the reason for that was our activity in the successor agency has wound down, so the amount of administrative allowance we get for it correspondingly has wound down as well. Again, transient occupancy tax is the largest revenue source for the city. It's about five times larger than the next largest general fund revenue source. As you can see in the chart, the last three years, revenues have been relatively flat, whereas our operating costs continue to increase with inflation. One of the things I wanted to, to bring up also is, in prior meetings, I'd mentioned that the loss of one of the major hotels was offset by increased occupancy at other hotels. While that is partially true, looking at the numbers in a little more detail, most of the offset was due to increased average room rates. So comparing calendar year 2017 to calendar year 2018, the average room rates went up by approximately 15%, and that's really why we didn't see a drop in our TOT revenues, because the number of rooms rented did decrease, at least comparing calendar year 17 to calendar year 2018. Again, the chart here is with fiscal year ago. So just a brief background on the city, we do have a 12% tax on gross receipts for transient rentals of 30 days or less. In the fiscal year 1819, revenues were approximately 5.4 million. That was a 0.6% increase from fiscal year '18's TOT revenues. TOT revenues account for about 53% of our general fund revenues. 22% of those revenues collected are transferred to the chamber for promotion in the fiscal year '20 budget. That amount is just shy of 1.2 million. Again, here is a breakdown of our city's general fund expenditures. Again, the general fund are the things you normally think of when running a city. Law enforcement, fire, make up the, the largest two percentages of our general fund expenditures, and as you can see, the chamber prom- see, the chamber promotion accounts for approximately twelve percent of the city's general fund expenditures. When doing comparison, and I've, I've received a number of questions on this, so I just want to provide background on some of the terminologies you might see when it comes to TOT. TOT stands for transient occupancy tax, and that is what we have at the city. A lot of cities, in addition to a TOT, have something called a tourism improvement district, or a tourism business improvement district. What those are is they are where a group of businesses in a district agree to allow an assessment to be collected for the purpose of promoting or improving that district. It differs from a tax in that it's based on the consent of the businesses in the district, and approval from a city council, rather than going to the voters like the, the TOT does. The reason I bring it up is, if you guys on your own do comparisons, comparing our TOT with other TOTs, please keep in mind and see whether that city has a tourism or a business improvement district, because that is something to consider in comparisons. So I know this is a lot of information to put on one slide, but just as an example, Huntington Beach does have a ten percent TOT, as shown on, on this chart. They also, in addition, have a four percent tourism assessment charged on hotel rooms. So again, what I'm just trying to illustrate there is, it's, it's difficult to compare TOTs, city to city, because each city does its tourism marketing in different ways. Some cities will do it in-house, where you might not see a, a large transfer to a tourism bureau or, or a chamber, but they do tourism activities inside the city. Again, I just want to bring this up, just to keep in mind, as you compare us to other cities, it's really difficult to do an apples-to-apples comparison. What I provided in that chart there is a breakdown of TOT as a percentage of overall general fund revenues. As you can see, Avalon is, has a higher percentage of its general fund revenues coming from TOT compared to most of the cities, if not all the cities in the, the chart on the right. Another thing to point out is all those cities have much larger operating budgets in general than the city of Avalon, so what I tried to do is also identify a couple additional cities that, that were more comparable to Avalon, in the sense that they were tourism-based cities with, with smaller operating budgets as a whole, so the three cities I pulled out. Again, it's, it's difficult to compare city to city, but I did pull out Solano Beach, Ojai, and Mammoth Lakes. So Solano Beach has a population of approximately thirteen thousand, they have a thirteen percent TOT. An interesting aspect of their TOT, ten percent of it goes towards general government purposes, two, of that thirteen percent goes dedicated to a beach-related CIP fund, and then one percent goes towards tourism promotion. Ojai, a population of seven thousand, they have a ten percent TOT. They previously had a one percent tourism improvement district assessment, but their council actually repealed that assessment in twenty seventeen. So eighty percent of their revenues, or their TOT revenues go towards general government purposes, and they dedicate twenty percent of their TOT to capital projects.
I'm just, just to help me understand, the tourism assessment district is something that we could form, and get so much, and we manage that money ourselves, and then you have to pretty much delineate what you're gonna use that for?
I, I think you could almost look at what we have as very similar to our tourism improvement district. The only difference is ours was set up as a tax rather than an assessment, so any changes would have to go to the voters. What some cities do that maybe didn't have a, a lot of cities don't have a dedicated amount in their municipal code going to a chamber, it comes up in a budget process every year. And so to have a dedicated, known funding source, businesses within the district have set these up, but the, the general process, once you get beyond that, is very similar. It's, it's dedicated funds going to a not-for-profit for the purpose of tourism and promotion, which is what the, the chamber does for the city. So the, in practice, it's very similar, the, the main difference is in the setup, being an assessment, it's not required to go to the voters, or at least that is my understanding.
Okay.
And then the, the last slide, just as a quick comparison, is Mammoth Lakes has a TOT of thirteen percent, they also have a tourism business improvement district of one percent, plus they also charge some of their tourism-related businesses a percentage of their gross receipts for ski-related businesses. Again, their TOT goes for general government purposes, and their TBIT or their tourism improvement district funds go towards marketing and tourism. Again, the reason I brought these cities up is just to try to get a comparison of, of smaller-sized cities and, and the relative amount they spend on tourism versus their overall budget. It's really difficult to compare city to city, every city's unique, and Avalon is, is probably uniques amongst them, but I wanted to just provide a few other smaller cities for comparison purposes. So that's, that's what I prepared, if there are any questions, if not, I can.
I think it's interesting that, I mean, yes, we had all the rain, and we had all these things that kept people from coming, but also, the room rates went up an average of fifteen percent? That's what you said?
Based on what's reported to the city, it, it looks like a lot of the reason we didn't see a decline in our TOT revenues is because the average room price did go up, and while some occupancy increases were noticed across the hotels as a whole, most of the offset was made up in increased room rates, or at least that's based on the, the information that's been presented to the city.
That's quite an increase, fifteen percent. I mean, that couldn't be a deterrent? I don't know. Well, do we want, we've got the public here, do we want the public to talk? Do you want to speak first, folks, or what?
Well, I, I guess I would like to know, what are we actually asking to, to talk about? What, what is your goal?
The thing that I had mentioned was, in attempt not to tax the local people for all the things the city will be needing, and we're looking at income generation, it's what, what could we do? This was one of the things that was brought up, and I threw out, well, maybe we reduce it by two percent, and that would create a hundred thousand dollar hardship to them, which means a decrease in the level of service, but money we don't get will, will create a decrease in the level of service for us if we don't come up with alternatives. So my thing was like, is this something that we would, wanted to put on the agenda, I mean, on the, on the ballot, for the community to decide? So, in what shape or form, I really don't know, but, but here we are in that discussion.
Okay.
Michael. And you've sat on both ends of the table, both sides of the table.
Yes. My problem that I have with where we're at right now, is that these talks happen during the day in study sessions, where the people that are really involved in this can't make it to a study session because they're working in the middle of summer. It would have been nice to have had this conversation in an evening session to come to consensus, consensus as to what's going on, but it just feels like it was done middle of the day, really couldn't get input from the business community, or the hoteliers, or anyone like that, because they were working this summer. That, that's my big issue here. And I really do think if you, if you're gonna be taking money away from the chamber in its promoting, promoting of this island, we're gonna, we're gonna see numbers go down, because we have a lot of communities that we have to compete with. And the idea was to be able to have a funding source, and it's, and it's not chamber, it's Visitors Bureau that does the promoting. Chamber is the business community, we're all under one umbrella, but it's the, it's the convention, the Convention and Visitors Bureau that's gonna be doing the promoting.
I totally understand that, and I appreciate that comment. And, you know, though, Jim does an excellent job at getting the word out. Comes to the council meeting, he hears it, he's on, he's on it, and you, the chamber did have at least two special meetings to discuss it and get, you know, get your, oh, just one, okay. But, but, and, but he's on it. So, but I apologize in the future if we do that, but we've only really talked about it once, and we didn't really get very far, and Cindy wasn't even here, so, so that's why today.
I would like to respond to, to Michael Ponce. Just, Michael, as you remember, when you were on council, we would have a study session during the day, was to, just to hash it out, to figure out if we, we will have a direction, particularly on this issue, and nothing was, there was never any formal action ever taken at a study session. It always had to come back to a regular council meeting, that would give the public the right to say something. We did have one of these at night, at a council meeting in January.
And in January, you decided to do an ad hoc committee with the chamber, that never met, never talked.
But as, once again, ad hoc cannot be generated by the city.
When we thought we were setting up a meeting, we found out it wasn't, it was something else. So, I, I really feel that this group has been ignored. And I'm not blaming it, it's just, it's just the way it all, it's just the way it all played out. But to not, to all of a sudden get to this point of talking about a ballot initiative, decreasing the funding that the chamber gets.
Well, and you know what, then, the discussion at the meeting, what we did discuss at, at the council meeting, was to increase the TOT, is what everybody, they were talking about, and everybody goes, no, we don't want to do that. So then I said, after that meeting, went, well then, what about decreasing it, so that the businesses aren't hit? So that's how that transpired. It went from not wanting to increase it, to, to let's consider the other, the alternative.
Just a really quick question, how much does it cost to put it on the ballot?
Nothing.
Nothing?
If we do.
I can't say, it would be more minimal, because we already have a ballot that's gonna be produced, so.
The cost of drafting the ballot initiative on it, making the argument where you, you have to explain what the initiative is, so it would be, it would be minimal, you know? But it would.
The impartial analysis.
Yeah, the impartial analysis.
Just curious, since you're really only saving yourselves a hundred thousand dollars in this scenario, like, what would the cost be to get the hundred thousand dollars?
Oh, right, right.
Wondering where we're going with that.
Yeah, okay. Well, you reduce it by a more percentage, and then it's two hundred thousand dollars.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To step back one round of comments to Mr. Ponce's mention of the ad hoc committee. It was my understanding, when we came out of the January meeting, that we were to find out at a future meeting, who among the council would serve on that ad hoc committee, and that action, to my knowledge, never took place until we got to the later conversation about a special events subject, which was where Mr. Haves and, and Ms. Cassidy were appointed. And I went back and looked at the, at the tapes, and it's distinctly different language that was used at that time, but that's the closest we came to having an opportunity to know with whom we were to meet. And, and we knew it even at the time in January of our board retreat, and it was even something that therefore got put into our work plan, the formation of an ad hoc TOT committee, one of the attachments in the email I sent to you folks, I don't remember when it was, over the weekend. And we had even named in there potential partners to bring to the table for that discussion, and, and that discussion, in my mind, was to look at something broader than just an increase in TOT. It was TOT enhancements, it was alternatives, it was possibly a TBIT. It was, it was to bring all of that expertise together, and to use the resources of this business community to advise that process. So.
Neither of you to remember signing up for that?
No.
TOT ad hoc?
I gotta tell you, I've been appointed to so many committees lately. I, I just show up when a meeting request comes, I just say, yes, I can be there.
Well, I, I just, I just think we, because, because I meet regularly with the city manager, and there were various points along the way, well, if, if we're going forward with this, then that, and I, and I just think we never got there. I'm not trying to cast blame, it just, it just didn't happen, and, and we're sort of now absent exactly what we asked the opportunity to do. So effectively, I'm still asking, I guess, is, you know, is, is with whom on the council am I to engage for this ad hoc committee?
No, that is incorrect, Councilmember Olson. Steve and Cindy are the revenue generating ad hoc, and it was going to be Cindy and Councilmember Hernandez on the, as, as you as the alternate.
And then Mr. Hernandez, you know, we just had that meeting. So.
Okay, so, let's be fair and say, communication has not been a hundred percent over the last eight months, that's, that's a fair comment, but we are where we are today. So, I guess my, my question is, we, we received ten pages of information from the chamber, that was honestly quite painful to go through today, but very, very.
I bet it was more painful on my end.
So, so I guess, what I am saying is that I appreciate all the time and effort in putting that information together, and I, and I know now that it's also been made available to anybody in the community as well. I guess, can we spend some time listening to members of the community who, who, who are interested in changing the percentage, or may have a different perspective than, than the chamber, with not setting your, your items aside, but to maybe hear from another perspective?
Sure. And also, because I think it bounced back, a member of our business community sent an email since we've convened tonight to all of you, and for Mr. Olson, I saw that it bounced. So, just another email, another communication from one of our business owners came through this evening.
Who's that?
Mr., I never can say his name, Yul Chiklis? Jimmy Yu?
Oh, I got it.
You got it? Okay. On the, on the autoresponder, it looked like a bounce back, so.
Well, I would be curious, I, if there are, and again, I'm looking at revenue generation, I'm not looking at trying to slam the chamber because y'all do a good job, okay? I want to be perfectly clear with that. Are there members of the business community that are also residents of Avalon, that look to, how do we balance what the city needs to do to make their quality of life good, and what the business community needs to do to make, let's say, the visitor good? And I don't know if there's people that just say, well, no, it's just, you know, I don't know if anybody thinks about the city side, they just think about the business side, and I think they're related, but they're not, you know? I mean.
I think they're intricately related.
Yeah, so.
I think that's why my organization exists.
Right, and so I guess that's where, and I try to think about balance all the time, you know, is where's the give and take, and what do we do to make sure that our streets are clean so, and our sidewalks don't have potholes so that, but our visitors don't trip? I mean, you know, so I don't, I guess I don't, I'm curious if the business community and if anybody would say, well, maybe we could bend a little bit, or maybe the business community just says, no, it's, I'd love to hear that.
Sorry for the broken record, but I thought that was the point of having the committee convene and have that conversation and make recommendations.
Right, right, yeah. And then I guess the situation is, if we don't do, if something is going to go on, you know, the ballot, it has to be by October, or else it's another two years before we look at this again, and maybe that's how long we have to wait, but, I don't know. Anybody else want to talk? Speak?
Bart Glass, forty-five Gaviota. Just a couple things. One thing that could generate business in this community and generate revenue for the city to spend is winter events, events that we could do in the wintertime. We talk about it, but it never goes anywhere further. There's lots of events that have happened in the past, the motorcycle race, these other things that have really done something. We talked one time about getting a number on what, what does the city make in tote when this town is booked out in full? And if we had one weekend per month in the winter that it was booked out in full, it would, I'm sure it would more than offset this hundred thousand dollars, which we would take from the engine which runs the city, which is, is advertising our businesses in the chamber.
Exactly.
I, I, it's always expensive to advertise, when we do it as a group, it's obviously less expensive. We are competing against people that have a heck of a lot more to offer than Avalon does. Guys, there's a lot of cities that, that do. But I just think if we, if we work on winter events and stuff like that, the other thing is, if we put this to a vote of the, to the city, for the, the local citizens to say, okay, yeah, we think you should take this out of the tote, and give this to the city to spend, because I don't want you taking it out of my pocket. Well, come on, guys, I can tell you how it's gonna end. Of course, they're gonna vote for this, because in shortsightedness, you'd say, yeah, I don't want to spend it, but we can't keep passing all this stuff along to, you know, to anyone who comes to visit our city. It's expensive to come here, from the rooms that I rent, to the, the boat fares, to the parking over town, to everything you do here, for the cost of eating out, everything is. And I don't think we would have a quality of life without businesses in this town. So you might have a real nice, relaxed of life without businesses in this town. So you might have a real nice, relaxed community, but there's not going to be anyone here. So that's just one or two things.
And on the big events, I know, that's the thing that we're talking about. So if you want to be the one to-
I'm happy to get together and see what we can come up with because-
That would be great.
I know that would be the better way out of things is to generate more business in the season when there's no one here.
Right.
You know, when we're all sitting quiet and could use a good weekend. So.
Exactly.
Thanks.
No, thank you, Bart.
I think that just, I just want to do another plug for Steve's comment earlier that we do need a member of the community to step up and sort of lead that committee and invite us to participate. If anybody's interested, now's the time to step up and invite us.
Bart just volunteered.
Just because I'm standing here right now doesn't mean that.
Oh, and Rob volunteering too.
But Bart, that was well said. Rob Walker with the Island Company. I'm into big events. And there's no question about it. And ironically, just earlier today, the topic came up about wet travel and our, our, our community leaders in the stuff, in the public safety sector demanding quite a bit of money for, for that particular event because the funding isn't available on your side. So as that pie chart very nicely illustrated, you've got bandwidths of funding that aren't being met. And so therefore, the businesses are being leaned on somewhat, not to, not to get into the chiefs and, and what their needs are. But there is a real element to everything that we're doing here. I've been in this business for, the tourism and hospitality business for over 30 years. I've worked in some of the largest markets in North America and the world, and some of the smallest ones as well. And what happens when we address culling that funding for any reason, it's like a circular reference or a snake eating its tail. There's a negative outcome to doing something like this. And, and the, the community hurts, marketing hurts. We at the Island Company spend millions of dollars in sales and marketing to benefit the entire community. We're, we're a little laser pointed on our own, but by default and by osmosis, the whole community benefits from that. No difference from the TOT tax. Smaller communities up north, as was earlier illustrated, have drive-up markets. It's a very different market to get over here. It's expensive to get over here. And identifying and isolating Catalina Island on its own and benchmarking against other communities is probably not the most prudent approach, nor is it accretive to a successful outcome. What we need to do is find some other ways of doing that. We don't bank percentages, we bank dollars. Balancing your budget is paramount. It's really important for, for you. It's important for everybody here. There, there has to be a different vehicle to find that $100,000 or rework the mechanics of your budget. It's pretty straightforward. I know it's hard, it's tough, we all go through it. And it's, we're going through that cycle and that season right now. So it's important that we create more opportunities on the island to drive group business and large event business as well, in addition to the transient. It's, if we had a big, bad winter, hasn't helped us at all. I wouldn't want to take one event or two events to determine a future course of action with the political outcome of the TOT tax. But I think it's incumbent upon everybody in the council and the commu, the business community to drive more business through our doors and our, our mole, so to speak. That should be the focus.
Okay, great.
Enough said about that.
Very nicely said.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Boy, we even got Jack out tonight. Whoa.
Jack Tucy, 340, Rigby Terrace. There are three people that promote this town with, in their own league, which is Sata Catalina Island Company, Catalina Express, and the Chamber of Commerce. Within that, Sata Catalina Island Company has the most to gain from advertising. We all know why. But they put their money where their mouth is. No complaints. Catalina Express has a semi-exclusive on boat fare, which is a major part of our tourism problems, and all the freight that comes to this island. We all have to pay what they have, their single high price, prices. Okay, the boat company also came out with a magazine to compete with the Chamber magazine, costing us, the rest of us, more money. The, the freight service obviously has some exclusive issues there that need to be really looked at by the city. The Chamber represents the rest of us members, okay? We, we put money into the Chamber, we, we promote their magazine, their pocket maps. We give free rooms, we give free meals. We do everything to help promote in our own way. But they're our, they're our flag that helps us, the rest of us, promote our businesses. So taking something away from them seems to be a little bit out of line. Out of the other two, the Island Company, they, they always put their money where their mouth is. The second one, you know, he didn't want a birthday promotion a few years, a year or so ago. And so he was taking $400,000 out of your budget, you know, to give a free, free birthday trip for somebody. And instantly, that birthday trip really had a lot of hidden social media contact because, you know, people told other people about their great time, their great trip, and everything they got which brought more people. Okay, so the, these people there, they want us to, to buy their magazine. They want us to, to, they want to give us a promotion to reduce freight. But then they want us to pay for part of it. We have to advertise in order to get that rate to promote the island in the off-season. Okay, so, I mean, they really aren't stepping up to the table. Okay? And, you know, you have an exclusive with those people, or this, the city has let them have an exclusive, semi-exclusive. And maybe it's time you guys step up and say, we need another boat company. Or hey, you guys come to Jesus here and do something on your own. Okay? That, that's my thing is the person that's not paying is there and you want to take it away from all those little guys. We don't want you to do that. We want our spokesman to be here. So I think it's a matter of where do you get your $100,000? It's there in another, you know, $400,000 you were contributing to promoting this island with a birthday promotion, which I don't think anybody had a complaint in, in the, in the businesses here because everybody walked in with a badge on their shoulder, or happy, and all my employees said happy birthday. I mean, face it, employees on birthday, it's like sacred, they, they're sick on their birthday. So, I mean, what does that happen? We don't get birthday on the weekends, we get it every day. It's your birthday. So we had a lot of people, what am I going to do on my birthday? I'm going to ditch work and go to Catalina. And then I'm going to see the experience I had and everybody loved it. I'm going to tell my friends and I'm going to come back here again.
Yeah.
Okay, with family. So Ben Birthday Island wasn't really bad. It was really good for us. But, you know, there's your $400,000 worth of advertising, which shouldn't be, you shouldn't be doing it, they should be doing it. Okay? And it's time you guys use your, your fist and make things work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Yeah, I, I happen to agree on that birthday.
Hi, Lisa Lovell, Director of Operations for Catalina Tours and Catalina Food Tours. We partner with three different transportation companies, 14 different tour companies, eight different restaurants, three charter companies, and about a dozen hotel properties for Catalina Tours, and also partner with 14 restaurants for Catalina Food Tours. Partnering with the majority of them being small businesses, AKA not the Island Company, Island Express Helicopters, Catalina Express, we know what their reach is in terms of advertising, and it is not great. We try to help out with that. We are one of the few companies on the island that has an in-house blog writing and marketing program. And we try to grow that wherever we can, which usually means Erin and I end up doing lots and lots of overtime that we don't get paid for, or end up losing money on, literally. And we know where their businesses are. It's usually one or two people that are in their office that can actually do some of those things when they're not in a ticket booth, or at a host stand, or running a hotel front desk. I don't know, I think you all have worked in the service industry, in the business industry long enough, to know that the Chamber, in combination with entities like the Catalina Express and like the Island Company, put together a lot of the money that helps to fund the Chamber because of the size of their business, because of how they operate, the number of businesses they operate. The biggest part I think that we're not considering is two different levels. One, the amount of people that they put out for trade shows, that not one of our businesses could sustain paying for being a part of a membership, sending people over town, paying for hotel rooms, paying for boats, that have to then create that space for those people to go be a part of and reach business-to-business contacts or large party group travel sales. There's no way we could do that. The other thing that I think you would be discounting in removing that $100,000, which I'm assuming, depending on where someone is working in the Chamber or Visitors Bureau, is somewhere between one to potentially three personnel that you'd be cutting from their business, is that they refer out people to the right location where they need to go from their green pier booth. The amount of assistance that their team provides in answering phone calls, sending out visitors guides, answering emails, is immeasurable. So I would hope that, at the very least, you would keep TOT the same and the payment to the Chamber the same. I don't know if people are ready for an increase yet. I think that you have a number of smart people, both working in the city, on the council, and in this room, that could come up with other types of revenue generation to be able to reach the goals you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nicely said.
Hello, I'm Nicole Hoenstein, General Manager of the Holiday Inn Resort and also the Catalina Island Inn. Just to give you a little bit of my background, I've been with the hotel industry for 25-plus years. I've been based in San Diego for most of that time, and I have been on the island for the last five years. I have to tell you, I work for a huge management company. We have 47 hotels all along the coast of California. And when I came here, I was overly impressed with the Chamber. We always help our chambers, we're always members, but when we look at what we get out of our Chamber from Avalon, it's much higher than all of our San Diego hotels, our Solana Beach hotels. I mean, it's a huge difference. So that was the one thing that my ownership asked me to do. When I come to this island, get involved with the Chamber. See what the Chamber can do. If there's anything else we're missing. And we were. We weren't participating in everything that the Chamber had. Now that we have participated, our revenue has definitely grown. I will, grow, we bought another hotel. I mean, we love the island. Going into 2020, we're not too excited for 2020. It's not a year to stop advertising. You have to advertise more. I don't look forward to having my meetings next month where I have to start budget because I believe the city is hoping a 2% for the hotels. And I think we pushed the demand this year, like he said. We had to, occupancy we lost, even though with us having two hotels less, the demand was on the island. So we grew the ADR because when the demand is there, you grow the ADR. And that's what the hotels did. Now, next year, it's going to be tough for us. So we can't take away the advertising. I wish I had the million dollars from Rob's marketing fund to do these two hotels, and I don't. And most of our small hotels on the island, which are 20, 30 rooms, we don't have that marketing. We need the money to go to the Chamber, and we all need to work together and market the island as a whole. That's the only way we're going to succeed.
I have a question.
Yep.
Last year, you had, you had a lot of work-
I still have them.
How long is that going to be?
May, well, nobody's in the room, May of 20. So-
May of 20?
May of 2020.
Really?
So, but, you know, they have about 50 guest rooms that they take for the ranch, and then that's going to go away. So I'm expecting, in all honesty, probably March, it'll start to decrease. So I think the first quarter, I'll sit nice, but the rest of the quarter, I'm really worried. All of our hotels that we own, and again, we have 47 hotels, they have not hit the numbers in 2019 like were expected.
Right.
We have to be watching the market and what's going to happen.
Yeah. And the, and when they do the employee thing, whoever, no matter who it is, there's, there's a discounted rate, I imagine, from your regular rates when you bring workers in like that, because you have them on a consistent basis? Or no?
No.
No?
I mean, I gave them a, a rate.
Right.
It's somewhat a group rate, but I wasn't stupid when I did it.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm not-
I just want to be, yeah, do you know what I mean? Just honest. I mean, if you wanted to take up that many rooms and I couldn't sell it, then here's what you're going to have to pay for.
Exactly. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks.
No, thank you for coming. Bryce?
Bryce Noel, CFO of the Chamber of Commerce. So first, I want to make a clarification that there's almost no circumstance under which diverting $100,000 from the Chambers at revenue generating experience. Rob touched on it a little bit, but this is cutting as opposed to raising. When you talk about revenue generation, that's raising money. I, I really think that the focus needs to be on raising money. And to give you guys a little bit of information, the Chamber gets 1.1 million. The organizational overhead expenses, which we would, in nonprofit world, call administrative expenses, are $609,000. It raises by itself $579,000, making the effective administrative rate for the money that is given to the Chamber roughly $29,670. That represents about 2.5% of administration fee. $30,000, if you were to take all of that money and have one employee part-time here at the city run that 1.1 million dollar budget, that is the amount of staff power that you would have to use that money wisely. So the effective rate that you're getting for the money that you're spending is, is better than almost all the nonprofits in the world. The Rotary Foundation, which is number one on every list in the world, operates at about a 1% administration cost. And the majority of nonprofits operate somewhere between 30 and 60%. So you're getting, you're getting good money. Jim is, he can do a presentation exactly like Matt's and take four times longer.
He did, it's there somewhere.
But I'm going to be honest with you guys, you know, with, with, with public money, that's exactly the way that you want it. So, thank you.
I appreciate it, Bryce. Thank you. Okay, then Jim, I guess you can't come up here.
I just wanted to clarify for anyone who wasn't at the second study session, as we did do an analysis of how much revenue the city does generate per visitor per day. And we did it for a day visitor versus an overnight visitor. For the overnight visitor for the general fund, I believe, one night, average night on the year is what we took, one night, one day, brings in approximately $12.60 to the city's general fund. So you can do the math of if you had an event with 1,000 people or 500 people. But there is a, the presentation, I believe, is on the city's website. And I believe the amount was $12.64, somewhere around there, per day. So that information's out there for whoever does want to start a conversation about events on the island. I'd be happy to provide them any other information I can.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Matt.
While we've been sitting here, I've been asked if I could read one of the letters that you received into the record, and that is from Ben Villalobos at IEX Helicopters. Dear City Council Member and City Management, unfortunately, I am unable to attend the meeting today in person, so wanted to express my views on reducing the tourism promotion funding available to the Catalina Island Chamber and Visitors Bureau. IEX Helicopters has seen a downward trend in the number of cross-channel visitors compared to 2018. Please see attached graph. I can't show you the graph. As a transportation company like the Catalina Express, we are totally reliant on the Chamber and on island entities to stimulate demand to the island. I feel that reducing the marketing and promotion budget available to the Catalina Island Chamber and Visitors Bureau is going to have a huge negative impact on island visitation, not just for us, but for all businesses, for all business owners, excuse me, and stakeholders. We employ a team of 20 full-time staff in order to facilitate daily flights to the island and additional staff for our charter services in the region. Two years ago, I was tasked with rebranding the company to capture a larger market share of the charter business from Santa Barbara to San Diego, and this side of the business has shown tremendous growth. If it was not for this increase, then solely flying to the island would not be financially viable for us as a business. As you know, I started the Catalina Wine Mixer when I worked for Catalina Island Company. I always believed, I always believed- I always believed, I always believed in trying to create demand on the island in the shoulder seasons through special events that would appeal to a different demographic looking for unique, fun experiences. In order for that, for the business that rely on tourism, destination marketing is the most important tool in order to achieve this. The Catalina Island Chamber and Visitors Bureau are looking to work with an agency in order to create a solid island brand to help simplify the messaging to the mainland and drive more visitors to the island. Creating a solid brand is vital to the long-term success of tourism on the island, and any reduction in tourism promotion funding will jeopardize this. Thank you, Ben Villalobos, Vice President of Business Development, IEX.
Great, thank you. Good.
Good evening. Cherry Dunn, 133 Upper Terrace. I don't have the magic answer of where you find your $100,000, but I can tell you, please don't take it from the Chamber. We depend on them to advertise for us. They do an excellent job of it. They represent a lot of our small businesses that we can't afford to compete with the big guns out there of whether it be Disneyland or SeaWorld or wherever. I can tell you, this has been one of the toughest summers ever for business, whether you call it, the reason being the weather, the economy, help, whatever it might be, it was a very, very difficult summer. I know that we're down singled and sometimes even double digits in, over the 2018, and not even saying 2018 was a great year. So what we need is to figure out how to find more money to give to the Chamber to bring more people here. It is what creates the opportunity for us to improve our business, to reward our employees, to take care of things in the off-season when the businesses basically are in the negative. But to even consider decreasing that amount is only going to make it less viable for businesses to be here. When it gets to a point where we have to close certain days because there just isn't enough business there, that's what we're going to have to do. And I know there's a lot of scuttlebutt about even the cruise ships and the additional cruise ships. We need those people. Those people are the reason that we are able to hire a plumber or have something painted or replace carpet or whatever it might be to, to, to grow our business. But to take that money away from the Chamber right now would be just one of the worst things that could happen. Thank you.
Okay. And again, we wouldn't be the ones taking it away. The "we" isn't us, the five of us here.
Here in Ubank, 18 Canyon Terrace. Jerry and I don't agree a lot, and ditto.
Okay.
Can I ask you where all of you are at? Is that inappropriate?
Well, I just want to tag on to what you were saying just now. You are correct, Annie, that we four up here would not be making the decision whether or not we would be reducing or even increasing tax. It's whether or not we decide we want to see it on the ballot as a representation of the community's desire. So we make the decision to put it on the ballot, and, and that is a decision that we make, and it's a very big one. We've heard from a number of persons, and I know there's at least 15 or 25, 30 more in the audience that haven't spoke yet, that I'm pretty sure I can tell you is ditto to what we've just heard. So I, again, want to put it out there. Is there information that, on the other side of the fence, that anybody wants to share? Please, now's your chance.
And we have, we have sheriff's protection, so.
I need that walking out of here tonight.
Yeah. Okay. See what a good job the Chamber does in telling everybody what's going on? Good on you, Jim.
Just one, you're saying that you're not, you know, taking the blame, so to speak, or whatever, but I think the fact that putting it on the ballot is representative of where you're coming from.
Not necessarily. Do you ever go in front of Sam's Club or Costco, and you have these people there, and they're writing, and they're saying, oh, you signed this thing, you know, to put it on the ballot? And I do, because I think people have a-
And you don't even vote over there.
No, it's county. No, they'll, they'll say, no, they say, are you a registered voter in LA County?
Oh, in LA County?
And I go, yes, I am. So, anyway, oh damn, I was down in Orange County. No. But, so anyway, so sometimes it's my, that people have the right to vote. So I, I always think if somebody goes to all that work, then, fine. Now, is the city want to go through all that work to put something objectively or impartial on the ballot? I guess that's what we decide.
Correct.
Debbie?
Hi. You know what? I guess I feel like a public stoning, haven't had one for a while. I want to say that I appreciate, actually, because I'm out of the business world, thankfully, and, and I heard everybody today, I remember, you know, your bills that come in for a business are four, five figures. They're not just, kind of like a building, and like that. But I also think it's a hard decision when they close a Long Beach post office, when the state went broke. And what I'm hearing now is you're looking for a place to reprioritize where what's left can go, right? Everyone, I heard just everyone say that this was a hard year. I've heard it everywhere. It was hard, with the Chamber doing the best that it's doing. And nobody's saying they're not doing a good job.
Right.
All right? Nobody's saying that. I'm not saying that. But my buck doesn't go as far either. And I think the city's buck doesn't go as far either. So it appears to me that you made the decision to bring it up, to say, can we rob Peter to pay Paul? I do it every day, all right? I do it every day. It's not that anybody likes to take the economic hit that we're all taking, you know? I don't know where my mail goes now, but it doesn't go where I sent it, okay? You know, it doesn't, I think, my budget doesn't work. My budget from last year is not, did not work this year, the one before that. And it's true for all of us. And so, believe it or not, I came upstairs to say, I commend you for taking, at least looking at this. I mean, everybody's priorities change every day. I know mine do. You know, bringing a pillow in my purse is my top priority at the moment. It'll change, you know? And I think it's been a hard year, and people are working just as hard as they ever have for not as much money. I had some years like that. It was called the crash, you know? The last two years of the deli was, was brutal, you know? And I appreciate that you brought it up. I'm not, I mean, I don't know where it's going to come from, you know? We're all short. You know, and my annual don't raise a sewer rates meeting, isn't that what I say? I'm short. You know, I don't know anybody that's got a pile of expendable cash, but I appreciate you confronting it, you know? And I appreciate you entertaining the idea. And I do appreciate what the Chamber and everybody here does.
Right, exactly.
You know, I'm going to do. So that's it. Don't hit me.
Okay, thank you. Perfect.
I think to answer your question, for me, I think we have not done everything that we can do before we get to this point. So one of the items that was brought up earlier today when we're talking about revenue generators, restaurant on the fuel dock, yeah, we need to, we need to get moving on that. The apartment complex at 206 East Whitley, yeah, we need to, we need to figure out what we're going to do there and get that rented. I don't think that's actually going to be a revenue generator. I think that's just going to be a valuable asset that we provide for the community. But right now, it's kind of taking a lot of money out of the city's coffers. The vacant office space at the Mole, we have a couple of those out there now, and I think it would behoove us to get those rented.
Wait, ask, get clarification from Denise on that. Because I asked, I, the only one right now is, is the one where you've taken back, aren't the rest of them rented?
Yes, I believe we have lockers stored in that spot now while we are repairing the Mole. And the other one belongs, my understanding is the LA County has their emergency stuff stored in it, and it's always been held for that, as well as if we ever got another cross-channel carrier, that we would have a booth for them. But it has the county's emergency stuff, to my knowledge.
Okay. If it's, if it's storage, if we're holding it for a cross-channel carrier, let's, let's talk about it at that point. I've been here for 14 years, and we've not had another, well, we had other cross-channel carriers, but we haven't had any discussion of any future ones. So my vote would be to, to try to generate some revenue out of that spot. Ollie said at one of the meetings that I watched online, and forgive me if I say it the wrong way, but we should also look internally. Are we, have we looked at, have we really fine-toothed, gone through with a fine-toothed comb all of our expenses and where we're spending money, and, and can we maybe take a relook at that? I'm, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak, but, in this regard, but I have six businesses in this town, and the Chamber is my marketing arm for my businesses. And for the, for most businesses, the first thing that they look at doing when they need to cut expenses and costs is they always go to marketing dollars. And it always bites you in the bum later, that you, you can't just not market your business. You can't be out there, you can't be not spending money on your business expecting that all of a sudden people are just going to know who you are and, and to, to come to you for their needs. So I guess, for me, I spend, for every $1,000 that I spend in marketing, which is a lot to me, I get $10,000, $20,000 of marketing from the Chamber. So I'm personally not seeing the benefit. If we were talking a half a million dollars in change, that might be a different story, but for the $100,000, I'm personally not in favor of going, putting something on the ballot to reduce it. If we wanted to talk about increasing it, that's a whole different conversation, but, but I, I'm not in favor of reducing the amount that the Chamber receives.
Well, the increasing that y'all said at the last, that meeting, no.
We did, yeah. But I, but I'm just saying, if, if this type of conversation that's happened here tonight happens again over, or needs to happen again over putting a percent or two onto it, then maybe we need to look at that. But, but I'm not really in favor of putting a measure on the ballot to reduce it. And, and I think we're at this crux of making a decision right away because we only have so many days before we have to have everything completed, and that time will come quickly. So that's where I stand.
I'll go next. I don't support putting it on the ballot measure as well, and here's a couple of reasons why. I believe that the people voted for this, and I don't know that there's enough support right now that people would want to put it back on a ballot measure. Also, I think that taking that money away could potentially, we could actually lose 100,000, more than 100,000 in revenue. And I think the city, I know what Cindy said, I've been up here for a short time, but I think the city could do a better job. It's not a way to balance your budget by going and grabbing money when there's a shortfall. I think we need to do a better job managing our properties and the things that we do. And, and one of the things that we had talked about, and I hope somebody from the community tomorrow gets ahold of us, is doing special events off-season can make a huge impact. It could be way more than, you know, potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I'm not in favor of putting this on as a ballot measure.
Michael, I spent two terms doing what you're doing now. I spent six terms as the Vice President of Marketing for the Chamber. I spent 40 years in the hotel business and tourism business. I wouldn't take a dime away from the Chamber. I mean, that, they, they earned it by managing the first ballot, when they put it on the ballot. I mean, the hotel people were behind it. I mean, they were well behind. They knew they needed more money to spend. And it's not the time to take money away. It's, it's the time to reinvest, so. I'm not in favor of putting it on, so that's three.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion not to put it on as a ballot measure.
Should we do it that way, Denise? Is that how it goes? Okay. And there's a second?
I'll say it.
Oh, okay. Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Okay, but before we get off that subject of income, kind of income generation.
Oh, but wait, y'all might want to stay for the next conversation.
You know what I'm going to say, don't you?
There's two other interesting items on the agenda.
There's another tax increase on, is the next item.
Actually, it's item number nine, but we can take it out of place.
Well, wait, I, I just want to say, and I forgot to mention, I had mentioned up at that revenue generating thing about adult cannabis, adult use. And we were going to talk about that at some point sooner than later. So that is a way to generate income, and so you might have opinions on that, but that is potentially a huge generator. So I don't know when were we going to be able to do that before, so if we wanted to put something, because we would have to put the tax on the ballot, what city tax, and...
I can put it on the next agenda for discussion and direction to move forward, to prepare the documents, if that's what you'd like.
Okay, okay.
I just want to say I'm available to answer any questions, too, if you guys have any.
On the cannabis, yeah, thank you, thank you. Okay.
Can we pull the, could we please pull number nine out of order now that I asked everybody to stay?
Nope.
No?
That's awesome. That is awesome. Ollie, I'm not, but thank you. Okay, that is awesome. That was good news. And we can't share.
Rude.
I know. Okay. We're going to, oh, we're going, let's talk sales tax?
Can we please take number nine out of order?
We may please take number nine out of order. Yes. Public system state.
This is a discussion concerning adding a measure to the March 3, 2020 ballot, increasing the city of Avalon's sales tax by 0.25%. At the last council meeting, it was, or was it our study session? I'm sorry, I can't remember, but we were directed to bring it back for a formal thing. And so we're requesting two, two things, twofold from you. This is approval to move forward. The first one, we would need to prepare a sales tax ordinance and submit it to the state of California for approval. And once we get that approval, it comes back with election resolutions to call the measure on the ballot. So that's what we're asking from you tonight.
How long does the approval state take?
We've done that many times, it's usually a week. And basically, because the state is the entity that collects the sales tax, any sales tax measure, you have to run through the state to, to, to get their approval. So once it's drafted, we go to the state, they, they, they look at it, and they generally approve it. We've done these thousands of times for all cities, and so-
It's not a large legal bill for that.
It's not a large legal bill.
You could probably draft it, Ollie, you can find one online. I would just want to tell you, I'm in support of the, the, the sales tax. The city only gets 1% of the sales tax, of the 10% currently. And the hospital gets 0.5%. So to me, and I could be wrong, the majority of what people buy, thinking about the locals, the majority of what people buy in this town are groceries, which are not taxed, and a lot of them, sad to say, don't buy a lot of clothes and those kind of items that have the sales tax on them. Even if they buy a car, other than a golf cart, they're buying it on the mainland. So I, I'm in-
But you still, I'm sorry, I'm just going to correct you, because if you buy a car on the mainland, you are charged the sales tax of the address in which it is garaged.
Oh, okay.
Or, and most people in Avalon that have vehicles on the mainland, for example, will still use their Avalon address because then they don't have the smog over town.
Who would do that? Oh, my goodness.
Good question for the DMV. How many cars are registered in Avalon?
But a lot of people who, there are a lot of people who have vehicles on the mainland that don't have a residence on the mainland. They only have a residence here, and that is the only place that you can register a vehicle that you're driving on the mainland. So, anyway, just to clarify that.
Thank you for that clarification, but I just want to say, I'm in favor, that, I think we said that could generate on a good year about 250K? Is that Matt?
Yes.
Matt, okay. I'm in favor of that. I don't think it's a, a big deal. Now, somebody did say, but Annie, when you buy stuff on Amazon, it, the tax is based on where you originate the sale, not on if you're buying it out of Chicago. That is correct? Okay. Well, I guess for-
Big discussion in the state on where that online sales tax goes. Right now, someone goes to a pool, the county pool, and they're trying to get it so it goes to where it's delivered. So it's not the warehouse.
Oh, okay. So anyway, I think this is, to me, this is kind of a no-brainer to put it on the ballot, but.
Could I just ask a question? I had a conversation with somebody, and I would like to get some clarification on it. Does, does the sales tax generated from Vaughn's Grocery Store, that, for those items, does that actually come back to Avalon?
Yep.
It does. We're confirmed on, okay.
So when they buy camping, little propane tanks?
Yep.
And when you buy beer there?
Or beer there, yeah. Or beer there, yeah. Okay. I don't know. Does anybody have a comment on that one? About us put, being able to put it on the ballot, supporting us to put it on the ballot?
We would come back at the first meeting in October, because hopefully we'll have the state's approval by then. And with the actual, all you'll be doing today is, is asking us to draft the language, take it to the state, get the state's blessing, and then the actual, we, we would do that. And then in October, we'd come back for the actual placing it on the ballot.
Okay. And you would write the impartial analysis?
That's once it is, once you, once you put it on the ballot, yes.
Okay. Leslie?
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. Matt, since you're here, would you be more clear with the figures that you think this would generate? Because I thought with the hospital's 5%, that was at about $300,000 a year they generate? So I don't understand, did you say 20 to 50,000 dollars?
No, 250.
Oh, okay. So let's ask him.
The, the sales tax is the general fund's second-largest revenue source. I believe in fiscal year 19, it brought in about 940,000 in general fund revenues to the city. There is also a half of a 1% sales tax, so the 10, there's 10% sales tax. The city receives 1% of that 10%. The hospital receives a half a percent of that, of 1%. The general fund in fiscal year 19 received about 940,000 from its 1%. So an additional quarter of a percent would be, assuming sales are the same, would be 220 to 250, somewhere in there. So 250,000 is a fair estimate.
Yeah, cool.
And so the, I guess to answer the question, the, the hospital in fiscal year 19 received close to 500,000 from sales tax.
Are there sales on drugs in a drugstore? Oh, no.
Not, not ship drugs.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. Okay. So I'd like to make a recommendation to direct staffs to repair back and bring back the appropriate ordinance on selection. Is there a second?
I'll hold a second.
Okay, so moved to second, further comments? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Okay, we should have done that one first. Okay. Now we're on to item eight. And that's Amanda Cook. Thank you all for coming.
If you want to improve your cell service, this is an interesting item for you. Just saying.
Yeah, Lisa, stick around, you're into cell service.
This, this item is to establish the guidelines on how the city permits wireless antennas on the city property, on the city right-of-way. So if it was along the harbor, or along our sidewalks, or our streets, these are the permitting guidelines for that. We probably will be bringing back at a later date the similar guidelines on how cell sites, wireless services would be permitted on private property. As you know, currently, most of our cell wireless antennas are on private property. They're behind Mount Ada, they're on the Baker Tanks, they're currently on private property. But because the statutes and FCC laws have all changed dramatically on what cities can do when cell sites request or cell providers want to be on city right-of-way, that's what this is for.
I have to be quite honest, this was not interesting reading, and I didn't read it off.
So let me, let me summarize. Okay. So the purpose of this ordinance is to create a system whereby in the right-of-way that the city owns, if anyone wants to put a small cell tower, or a cell, like on a pole, on top of that Edison facility, and whatever, we have the ability to regulate how that is done, time, it's, it's putting time and place, reasonable time-place restrictions on it. This brings you into compliance with the current state and federal law on, on what you can do and what you should be doing to regulate these small, these small cell towers on public or private facilities that are within the public rights-of-way. And so this just gives you the ability to start approving the little cells, that if people want to put them on a city pole or an Edison pole, they want to attach that, then we can do that. Has to be undergrounded, has to be as small as possible. If it can't be undergrounded, we set a very minimum, we, we set very strict requirements on how big the equipment would be. This is all designed to give you the ability to regulate that, to make it as unobtrusive as possible, but also to frankly encourage cell providers to start providing this service to the city so that we can start solving your cellphone problem without having to erect giant big towers.
And didn't we, didn't some, we do something a couple of years ago that, about, they couldn't just go and just set up one of those little buck, you know, those little...
I'm not, sorry.
Do you know what I'm talking about at all? It's like putting, kind, Ole, help me out.
I'm as old as you are.
Sometimes he can read my mind, you know? I don't know where he grabbed it, but, oh, God. So there, there like, there was something that we said, or maybe it was at SCAG, where you couldn't just go somewhere and put a box of, now I'm looking at Michael Palmer, on a sidewalk that would...
And Peter right-of-way. Like, you, you can't just go and do it. You have to have permission to do it.
But, and it seems like we had to put something out a long time ago that, so that we had control over that. But, Michael, you know what I'm talking about at all?
You're talking about utility boxes already.
Maybe that's it, too. Could they be communication boxes as well, though?
Right, it's basically like this...
Oh, you, I'm sorry.
So what Scott was talking about, cities are kind of limited as, in what they can actually do, particularly around small cell antennas and small cell deployments. In a lot of communities, there's a lot of pushback from people because they don't want them, because they're, they're obtrusive, or they can be obtrusive. And, and because they're, we're limited in what we can do with them in the public rights-of-way, one of the things that cities can do is regulate aesthetics. And basically, this ordinance would help us regulate the aesthetics. I think we actually have the opposite problem. We're in a community that struggles sometimes with communications. We are actually pretty inviting towards it. We want to see small cell deployments because it would improve our communication efficacy and our network. So rather than having these gigantic boxes, and small cells are kind of a misnomer, some of these battery packs are about the size of this podium, and they can be pretty obtrusive if you don't look at how to, aesthetically, how do you want these? You know, if you're going to put them up on buildings, could you require screening? So the ordinance kind of talks about those aesthetical parameters that they have to abide by. And then there's some things that we just can't regulate, things like the shot clock, that's regulated by the FCC. So when somebody puts in an application, we have a certain amount of time to evaluate and then issue a perm, a permit in order for them to move forward. Unless there's a reason why we can't move that forward, you know, I, we're, we're in a community that would really be accepting towards these.
Thank, and is, okay, and then I see something, a fees resolution, that would come forward later?
No, this includes the fee resolution for this, and what the fees are, are the F, S, SEC, is, is, no, whatever. The regulatory, the federal government has said, here are the fees that if you adopt them, they are deemed reasonable. And so they're $500 or $1,000. So, so we are making this a safe harbor for the city, is what the federal government says you can adopt.
So they have a fees resolution, we don't create one?
You would be adopting as part of this, the fee resolution with the fees established by the federal government.
There were fees in here?
It is the last resolution, and it's a fee schedule, and it is 500 per application.
Oh, I see.
For up to five, and then 10,000. And it, it depends on whether it's, it's 500 per application, if it's five facilities, 100 for each additional facility beyond five, and then if it's not, if it's not a co-location, if it's on its own, it's a thousand bucks. Federal government has said, by operation of law, this is reasonable, can't be challenged.
So let me ask another que, oh, go ahead, Cindy.
Oh, I was just going to say, but we, but the city has the right to, to say no on particular locations. So, so if I, if I am AT&amp;T, and I want to upgrade the service here, can I just, I want to put a, a small cell tower on, on this, this, and this? But aesthetically, if we as the city say, that is, that looks horrible, that takes away from the view shed, do we have the right to say no, but you can do it over here, here, and here?
We're giving you as much power to say no as poss, as legally permissible under federal law. So yes, they can't put it anywhere, they have to work with the city, they have to get an encroachment permit for it. They can't put it on everywhere, but we cannot prohibit it. Blanket, blanket wire.
Right. I'm not saying that we would, I'm not, that's not what I'm asking, is to say, I'm saying no on specific locations. Like, if it was really right outside my bedroom window, and that's all I had for a view of the harbor, you know, I'm just saying, could we say no, but you could go to this next pole down? That's all I'm saying.
Right. And, and the way it works is the only, the, the real restriction is if there's a certain location where they have to have that location to make it work, and that's the only location to make these small towers work, then we have to allow it there. But frankly, I don't anticipate that happening. So we still retain this discretion to move them around, to place them where they're going to be as, as safe as possible, as aesthetically pleasing as possible, as frankly obscure as possible, so that they're not, you know, out there. And we also are encouraging co-location, which means that we put as many of them as possible, these stealth things, in one location, so they're not spread out all over the city.
And in the future, we're going to have a box every thousand feet for 5G. Because that's the biggest coverage you can get out of that. So we're going to have a bunch of new boxes.
Well, you may, well, this, this is consistent with five, with 5G. The issue is, we are requiring that they be undergrounded to the extent possible. So it's not above ground, it's below ground unless they can't do it at that location.
So put the equipment underground, the antenna above ground?
Yep.
Cool.
Then I have a question. I have a question. Can I go, this, can I go out and buy a cell, whatever the heck that is, and put it on my house, all by myself? Does that do anything for cell service?
No, it'd be part of the network.
Okay. Can somebody set up just a total cell company just in Catalina? Or do we, somebody has to always be on the other end?
Well, your phone wouldn't work over in the mainland. If you want a phone that just works in Catalina. The, the cell just gets the phone on, that gets a call on a landline.
And then this has nothing to do with computer? And this is just cellphone services, has nothing to do with computer service?
Wireless services.
Wireless services.
All wireless services.
All wireless services.
Our wireless, and just on the city right-of-way.
Okay. I mean, okay. All righty.
Okay.
And, and so if there is a motion, let me just say one, one...
A pager service.
Okay. On, on page 13, on page 13 of the staff report on this particular item, we were waiting for ParsAC to give us the actual limits, and we have not heard back from, at least we have, I, I'm not aware that we've heard back from them. So this is how much insurance we, we would call, we would require. And so to solve the issue that we're still waiting for ParsAC, what I would say is, the first blank would be general liability insurance with a limit established by the city, and we just say that, and that way then ParsAC will tell us what it is, and that's what, how is it established. And then the second one would be, and limits of, and then it says, general aggregate, including premises, blah, 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 ending with operations as established by the city. So in each case, what we're saying is, we're not saying what the specific amount is, we're saying as established by the city. ParsAC will tell, tell us what those numbers are, and then when people come forward with permits, we, we tell them, this is what ParsAC is requiring.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to introduce and waive all further readings of an ordinance. Do I have to read the whole thing?
Yes, you do.
Okay. We have all further readings of an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 9 of the municipal code to add Article III, wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. Number two, adopt a resolution for design and development standards for wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. And number three, adopt a resolution for the application fees for wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, with the addition of the language on page 13 under insurance that the insurance with a limit established by the City of Avalon, and per occurrence for bodily injury and property damage as established by the city.
Good job, Cindy. Moved in second. Comments? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hospital?
Yep. That's you, Oleo.
I would like to call to order the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees Meeting Tuesday, September 3 at 7:26. Could we have the roll call, please?
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee Hayes?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
Chairman Olson?
Here. Any announcements? Jason left. Any ready communication?
We have none.
Any presentations? None. Oral communication? Members of the public may address the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speaker shall limit their comments for three minutes. Oh, I thought somebody stepped up to the podium.
That would have been a first.
Consent calendar.
Go do it, Kevin. Do you want to go ahead and do it?
I'm sorry, I was...
There's two items on the consent calendar this evening. We have minutes from August 6, 2019, Board of Trustees meeting. Number two is the CEO August 2019 report, and the CFO's narrative analysis for July of 2019.
Thank you. Any board members want to remove anything? Any public want to remove anything? Very normal, entertain, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, approve consent calendar items one and two.
I'll second.
Let's call for questions.
All ayes.
Adjourned. There you go.
And...
Yep.
Wow, we have a lot.
We have five closed sessions. They're all as stated on the agenda, so I don't need to read them with, that, that's it. On items number four and five, Mayor Marshall will be abstaining due to location near those properties.
Thank you all for coming.
You guys.
And item number three, Cindy will be abstaining, right? Field dock? Is that correct? Field dock lease?
The field dock lease, yes.
Yes. Okay, got it.
Really?
Just the lease.
But can't you...
Yeah.
If it's the lease with the island...
If it's with, yeah, if it involves...
So she might be able to be there?
I might be able to.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And we're going to do this for the next six years. And we're back from closed session. City Attorney?
There was no reportable action on item number three. Councilmember McGee and Cassidy could participate because the negotiating parties, which is as, as yet an unformed LLC, do not involve any parties that she has a conflict with. So there's no report of action.
Oh, thank you. Okay, good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.
Meeting adjourned.
Okay, where we going?
Are we turned off?